This is in furtherance of our efforts to improve our communication, to work collaboratively, as your, as the front of your handout says, as well as to provide us with an update on budget and legislative priorities. And so, why don't I see if Dr. Houston has anything to say before we introduce Dr. King?
Well, thank you. Mayor Frain and a member of council, city manager, Mr. Jones, and to my colleagues, and Dr. King, good afternoon. It's good to see each of you, and I'm pleased to have this opportunity to share with you all just a brief update on where we are in some very important matters. The last time we were together, we talked about the school accreditation report as it was just coming out from the Department of Education. And since then, of course, the war has settled and a final report has come in, and we thought it important today to provide information relative to school improvement plans for our schools that are not fully accredited, as well as those that are designated focus schools and priority schools. Now, you have quite a bit of information before you, and I promise you, we will not talk about every slide, but this is provided for your information, and I'm certain at some point in time, when you have nothing else to do, you'll want to read every single word of this document. But it is good information, and I think you will appreciate understanding, especially those focus and priority schools, but certainly all of our schools that are not fully accredited, the work that is being done, the requirements of the State Department of Education, and the improvement plans that the district has implemented in response to those. Additionally, we have information, as you said, on the legislative priorities. Unless there are questions today about those, about any of those, again, that's just for your information, items that we have agreed to ask our representatives to support, and those that we have agreed to ask our legislators to oppose. On November 12th, we'll have annual breakfast with the local representatives and talk about each of these items, and hopefully get their support on the direction that we would like to see them vote. And then, matters concerning the budget, I know there's been some question about what we anticipate our needs will be this budget year, and while we have not yet crystallized those needs, we did want to provide at least the process and the timeline, and some items that could potentially be a part of our needs for this coming fiscal year. And so, Dr. King, along with his staff, of course, will walk us through this information, and certainly in time enough to have us some good discussion on the items of your interest. Dr. King?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So, thank you to Mayor Frain, our city manager as well, as well as members of council, also, of course Chairman Houston, and members of board, our school board that are present. I think it is, as I always mention, a best practice to come together as the entities that we are, to talk about our collective interests, which is around educating children. And as Chairman Houston mentioned earlier, before, we were able to talk about our projections in terms of where we thought we were going to be, and what that involved, and the kind of work that it would entail in terms of moving forward. And so, today, our objective, objectives center on pinpointing those things that are happening as we speak in schools, to address the work of moving student achievement forward. So, I want to talk about that a bit, and give you an idea of the kind of strategies that are in place. And so, we've provided a document for you, which is more than, of course, we're going to spend extensive time on this afternoon. However, we do feel that the entire document should serve as a good reference for you, in reference to what accountability means for our schools and other school systems across the state. I'd like to also recognize the administrative team for their work in this regard, in terms of what the work has been about up until this point as well, and we'll talk a little bit further about that in a few minutes, and also have an opportunity for some of our representatives from the various departments to interject around the items of importance. Of course, we always began with our new mission and vision statement that's provided for you. Of course, we talk about the vision that our community stakeholders develop, which is to become the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community, and of course, that's our work, starting this current school year and into the next five years, really is the nucleus behind our strategic plan that is before us. As we move forward, I mentioned, we want to talk about the work that's being done in schools on a day-to-day basis, as it relates to accreditation, and just remind you that accreditation is really tied to the percentage of students meeting and exceeding standards, as it relates to the curriculum that is required at state level. So, simply put, that's what student achievement is about, tied to accreditation, as well as tied to the federal accountability piece. In addition to giving you an update in reference to accountability, we'll also talk about the budget and the budgetary process, what's different about it, and I'll ask Dr. Thornton to provide specific, more definitive information relating to the budget, but I mention that because the budget will certainly be an offshoot of the information that we talk about today related to student achievement, because a major difference for us this current school year compared to the previous year is that our budgetary procedure is tied to, and will continue to be tied to, our strategic plan. So, in other words, the priorities that are important for the school system will surface within the budget, in terms of recommendations that will go before our board. And as Dr. Houston mentioned, the last item that you have in your document really centers on the legislative priorities. I won't be talking about those, those are there for your information unless you have questions. So, with that said, we will begin with something I alluded to earlier, support and improvement in the state, as well as for our local school division. They're really, in my view, two separate but similar accountability process, procedures. One related to state accountability, all tied to the percentage of students meeting and exceeding standards, and all tied to the curriculum that must be taught in the classroom. And the state accountability process relates to all subjects, and the state accountability process really determines the whole notion of accreditation. Part two, in terms of the accreditation process, relates to what I refer to as the federal accountability procedures, which each state was required to submit, or had the opportunity to submit a waiver, and Virginia chose to submit a waiver, to replace the old traditional no child left behind procedures. And so, that's what is referred to as the federal accountability process, which relates to reading and mathematics, and also for high schools, on-time graduation and graduation rates. And that is what determines focus and priority schools, and that's provided for you as well. And so, we'll get a little bit deeper with that in a few minutes. We have provided for you a definition from the state of what is meant to determine the federal accountability piece, again, that replaced the old adequate yearly progress process that was before us. And now, there's a gap group analysis, which is what we refer to as a process for disaggregating the data. And for us, that means that you see a definition of gap group one. So, in other words, when we do our analysis, even for us now, as we do benchmarking or formative assessments, or we teach units, and that information is reported back to the teacher and to the schools, we have a process in place where we do what we call disaggregate the data. We disaggregate the data, we take a look at the total school, school and student population, and how they did with those indicators, but we also break it out by the ethnic categories, so your African-American students, your white students, Hispanic, Asian, multiracial, et cetera. And so, that allows us to get to receive an early snapshot on how children are doing from a formative sense. Things that I am pinpointing now is in an attempt to explain to you our procedure for ensuring that we keep a finger on the pulse of what is happening in the school, determining early what the deficient areas are, determining early which elements of the standard are areas of concern, so that we can make this real-time decisions based on that analysis. And real-time decisions might mean safety nets for students that may have struggled across a certain element of the standard, but real-time decisions could mean enrichment as well. So, not only are we honing in on those students that struggle across deficient elements of the standard, but also disaggregating the data to the point that we know those students that are on standard, and moving to the point of exceeding, so that we can stretch and challenge those students as well, and we refer to that as a process of enrichment. However, the slide that you have before you and within your packet is a definition of gap group one, two, and three, as defined by the state. And so, again, a requirement from the state to disaggregate the data in that way. And what I just suggested to you is that we do it across all of those subgroups. So, gap group one represents the students with disabilities, special needs students, as well as ELL students, which would be limited English proficient students, along with economically disadvantaged students, which would consist of those students that qualify for free reduced lunch. That represents and reflects gap group one. You see gap group two, and you also see gap group three, but I would draw your attention to the fact that in gap groups two and three, they are also inclusive of some duplicated counts, because in those two groups, gap group two and gap group three, they would also consist of students with disability, again, limited English proficient students, and/or economically disadvantaged. So, they could count across multiple categories in two and three, but not in gap group one. Gap group one is unduplicated, which means that they're only counted once. Okay? All right, from there, and that's for your information and understanding, and initially, when you look at it, it may be as clear as mud, but that is the requirement at the state level, that you disaggregate across all of those subgroups, and that you make the benchmarks across those disaggregated subgroups, as well as in the aggregate. Next document that you have is for your reference as well, and it gives you a snapshot of what priority schools mean, also what focus schools mean, and in the all-student category, which means in the aggregate, the total, students, all students, you determine priority schools based on the lowest performing 5% across the state of all Title I schools to determine priority. To determine focus schools, you see that it is based upon the lowest performing 10% of title schools. If you look at that schematic, where you see other subgroups under safeguard, you see that it does also include non-title schools, but at a different level, but also disaggregation is required with non-title, so it is not only specific to Title I, but also to non-title. But Title I, for us, of course, is of extreme importance, because at the end of the school year, last year, we ended at about 70% of our students economically disadvantaged, which means that they qualify for free reduced lunch, which is driven by title, and you determine whether you're under Title I, whether you're classified as Title I based on the percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged. Okay, priority schools. You have a list of those priority schools, and this is not new to you, it's just a refresher. And to the right of that, you see the definition of what would really constitute a priority school. In a few minutes, we're going to talk more closely about what we are doing in those schools, and what's required to move those schools forward, which would be, for the next slide, the division requirement, as well as the school requirement. The division requirement is the school system's initiatives that are in place. On the left side, on the right side, you also see the items of importance for each individual school. And so, as we think about the things that are in place to move student achievement forward in those schools, to summarize, I would say that the changes from last year to this year really centered on ensuring that we have the appropriate pacing guides in place. Pacing guides will really reflect the curriculum linked to the SOL at the state level, but also is a resource that we give to teachers to reflect what should be taught over a period of time, so that as teachers begin to plan, they have all the standards that are listed, all the elements of the standards that are listed, and over what sequence they should be taught. I will also mention that it is an expectation that we have ongoing dialogue around tweaking those. For example, if a certain concept is taught in the middle of the grading period, and teachers indicate that they thought they really should have had more time with that, and they want to move it to the front of the grading period, then we listen to that, and so, and go through the process of tweaking. But the key here, in terms of comparing the difference this year to last year, is that the administration went through the process of modifying and realigning the scope and sequence and the pacing guides to reflect what children should know and be able to do. So, in other words, the taught curriculum and the anticipated tested curriculum, all those things should align, in terms of preparing children for the assessment. So, before you, you have, on the left side, the division expectations, those are the things that we support as a division, and the state, of course, expects us to do as well, and on the right will be what is expected of schools in terms of moving student achievement forward. I'll pause there, because much of what I'm going to go into in a few minutes, will, from a conceptual standpoint, will be very similar to this, to ask if you have any questions in reference to this particular document, because this particular document really speaks to what happens real-time in the schools now, today, compared to what we were doing, because decisions should be made based on what our data really tells us about student achievement on a weekly basis within the schools, and the type of assessments that are given ought to align with what children are expected to know. And so, when we talk about inspecting what we expect, later on, you're going to see some procedures that we are implementing this year to determine that those things are actually done, and in other words, where is the evidence that growth is really taking place? And in some cases, when you look at where we were performing compared to what the absolute is, in terms of the expectation, there are huge gaps. So, we are expecting growth across all of those indicators to move us in the direction of the absolute, and in order to do that, you have to measure that and quantify it as you move forward across the grading periods. So, any questions around this piece?
I have one.
Okay.
You talked about, one of my concerns is, we talked about, and I looked at these two focus schools, and Richard Bowling being one, we talked about as we move forward to building a new school over there, we talked about this study, and making this a true neighborhood school, where we change the attendance zones. I look at the work that has been done in that community, but it does not reflect the, it's not reflective in the schoolhouse, why? Because, again, it's not a neighborhood school, meaning that there are certain areas within that neighborhood goes to that school, and then, like Middletown, Arch, Stonebridge, those areas don't go to that school, but yet, that's Broad Creek, and it's not reflective of the work we've done in terms of changing the social and economic tide in that community, where you would see the impact, because it's not. And so, when will we get to that, because I've heard it talked about, that you hired a consultant, a person who's supposed to look at that, to give us a snapshot of where we are, and give us real results? So, when we do move to that, we can understand the change, and really look at the, whether the test scores, or so on and so forth, within that schoolhouse.
Sure, sure. At this point, the comprehensive process to which you refer is being conducted by DeYoung-Richter, and we expect to have the first round from that comprehensive report early part of December. At this point, we have ongoing community discussions that are taking place, various analyses across all of the schools. For example, the socioeconomic variable is a huge piece, and it's included in that, as well as looking at 100% of the schools, to look at the capacity of the school, compared to the number of students currently within schools, to look at implications for school consolidation, if necessary, also to look at implications for school closure, also to look at implications for modifications of zones, as it relates to all of those variables. So, that's ongoing, that is in place now, and we did an RFP for that, to attempt to secure the very best firm, and when we say to secure the very best firm, we wanted the entity that had done this before in other urban environments with similar needs as ours. And so, we feel real comfortable, I do, right at this point, with what I see DeYoung-Richter doing in terms of engagement and review and that kind of thing. But to answer your question, we expect during the latter part of November 1st to December to have the first round of results on that, to be reported to the administration, and then reported to the board and the community.
So, we get a snapshot of what that attended zone for, that neighborhood school would look like?
We get a snapshot of what their recommendations tell us about that. Yes, sir. So, and from that, we will have to decide the type of comprehensive plan that we want to roll out as a result of what that tells us, because that will come in the form of recommendations, you know? They will develop their recommendations based on the socioeconomic piece. They will look at the configuration of schools, they'll look at numbers, all the things we just mentioned, and bring the recommendation back to us, and then we'll report it to the administration, and to the board, and community, and then make a decision for what needs to happen, of course, in a phased-in fashion, because I'm sure that there will be multiple things that would need to happen as a result of that. Any, from my administration, did I miss anything as far as the timeline on DeYoung-Richter? Am I on target?
I would hope that, you know, there's been some methodology as relates to us moving to neighborhood schools, and we supposedly have a concept at the elementary level where it is neighborhood, okay? And so, I would just hope that, you know, as the individual firm which you guys hired, that they're looking at some of the variables that went into play as they created neighborhood schools in the past. I don't know what variables you guys are looking at, I know that, you know, for me, socioeconomic, in terms of dispersing poverty, giving people real opportunities, to be able to get a snapshot of the work that has been done, you really can't get a true snapshot, because you have so many people that are coming in, and we dismantle one school, I don't know where those students are, are those students still coming from other areas, coming back into the community? But to really get our arms around the, at some point, we used to be able to quantify that information, but we kind of lost that connection to understand, I'm looking at the school, and there's the focus school, and so, I'm trying to understand, where do we lose momentum? We got an abundance of folk that are sending their children to private school, and they're right there in that neighborhood, and so, again, their zone is another school somewhere else. So, just kind of looking at, how do, you want to get buy-in, you want people to support, you want people to utilize Norfolk Public Schools, and so, I mean, we've talked about this for quite some time, so I guess I'm optimistic in December, we will be able to look at something that, or to be able to share something with the community as it relates to how we move forward, how we get these families to buy in to the school that we have right there in the community, opposed to sending their kids to private school.
Right, oh, absolutely, absolutely. That is the intention, that is the expectation, and a part of it does center on the total student population that now resides in the school. In other words, how many of those students are actually resident students? How many of those students are from the outside, from outside that residence? So, all of that will be a part of it, and taking a look at specialty schools, how many of those students are transferring in, but really don't live in that attendance area? So, all those items will be a part of that. Other questions? Thoughts? Okay. The next item is just further, information that provides you a list of the two focus schools that we have, and I'm going to move forward with talking about the expectations that we have in those schools, and that's provided for you in the same format as earlier. On the left side is what our school system expects and requires, on the right side is what, I should say, what the school system is expected to do across those areas. The right side will be items that the individual school has embarked upon in terms of moving forward. Of course, all of these schools are expected to report and document on an ongoing basis and using a tool called EndeStar, so that you can log on to see, you know, what are your daily plans, how are we meeting the expectations, for example, for monitoring student achievement, how do we receive snapshots on an ongoing basis of where students are, and how do we make real-time decisions based on what that snapshot is telling us? And so, embedded within this process will be those indicators without my going through each one of those. Of course, I'll be happy to pinpoint or talk further about any of the items that are here, but from, again, from a conceptual standpoint, it is much like the initial item that I mentioned to you, where we are showing the requirements and expectations for the school division, as well as for the individual school. So, that gives you that. Also, as a result-
Let's go back, Doc, and just go through a couple of them for me.
Okay, all right.
Give a couple of examples, showing where we are.
Okay. All right, so, if we go back and take a look at the division itself, and look at the piece that refers to collaboration, of course, we collaborate with the state, so we have an external contractor that comes in to work with the division. We have also a team that consists of our internal administration, which will consist of a Title I representative, also a representative from teaching and learning, and that's why you see the instructional piece, also special needs department, as well as ELL, and a principal from each school. So, that makes up that team, where they come together on an ongoing basis routinely to review the data that I mentioned earlier. For example, if we wanted to determine whether the pacing guide is actually being followed, that pacing guide is provided for the school and for the teachers, and the pacing guide says that you are to teach X element of the standard over X period of time, and then you are to assess how much learning took place over that period of time. So, now, there are indicators in terms of, and analyses of those results, as to whether students matched those standards or not. This team is in place to further ensure that those things are being done. For example, it's one thing to say that you provide a good connection between the taught curriculum and what we assess, and what we, how we prepare children, because what the quiz, if that's what it is that you give, must be aligned with what should have been taught, and then, the results of that should be analyzed to tell us whether children really matched the elements of the standard or not. So, the purpose of this team is to come together to do a review that the school should already do on an ongoing basis, and they are, to determine which caseloads are listed, because if children struggled across certain elements of the standard, then we ought to have caseloads of children that should receive safety nets, whether it's in the form of an extended literacy block, whether it's in the form of reteaching, or whether it's in the form of an extended numeracy block, and I always use the example of number sense enumeration or probability statistics, if a student missed some of the elements of the standard across that, then we're looking for the evidence that that was the safety net that Sam King actually received. And once we see artifacts and evidence of that, then we want to see evidence that Sam King tested out or matched it as a result of the safety net. And so, that is the ongoing- And so, that is the ongoing analyses that, to which we refer. Now, that is what we expect locally, in terms of providing central office support for that, to inspect what we expect, but also, we expect individual schools to do the same thing. And we feel as if we're getting better and better with providing the necessary support to schools, building-level leaders, and beginning to prepare teachers in a way that they can do their peer analyses and peer observations, and look at the same type of indicators to determine whether quality is there, because we got to measure movement, because in some cases, you have children that are two, well, multiple grade levels behind. If children are multiple grade levels behind, we have to know where they are starting, and then provide the necessary strategies to begin to move them forward, and then see the evidence that they really are moving forward. So, that's the essence of, of what this means.
When, when do you approach that, Doc? If you have that type of data, and you, you get a child that, let's say, fifth grade, and the teacher recognizes that this child is, let's say, one grade level behind, and have some deficiencies, whether it be math. Take me through a process where you, you deal with that child. You know, right now, we know that this child, we could save him, because in the fourth grade, we've identified him, we flagged him, we know he's a grade level or she's a grade level behind. I heard what you're saying to Mr. Richter, but within real time, how does that work?
Well, it, it, for us, it began day one this year, because we started the process with what we call diagnostics in each, at each level, elementary, middle, and high, across the appropriate subject areas. So, those diagnostics were also aligned with SOL. In other words, SOL readiness.
What do we do with that child? I, I just want to know, you know, talk to me like I'm a fourth, fourth grader. Tell me what you do with that individual. I, I want to see what steps that individual will go through to get the necessary help, whether it be an additional block, you know, we talked about, you know, how teachers getting stipends or whatever, to identify that kid, to get him, he or she that help right now, to get that kid back on track within a year or two, to make sure that kid is on-time graduation, but more importantly, that he leaves Norfolk Public Schools with a quality education. Sure.
What do we do? I'll begin by saying, once that analysis is done from the diagnostic, then the school and teachers determine the level of intervention that's necessary, and we call that the RTI process, which is response to intervention. And so, really, there's an example of tier-two interventions, and examples of tier-three interventions, which means there are more severe needs. And so, if it's Sam King, and you did a diagnostic, and you determined that my readiness level to go into from fourth grade to fifth grade was lacking, then that diagnostic indicated that, and it also indicated the elements of the standard around which I'm deficient. And so, then the school is able to assign differentiated instruction, and in, in addition to differentiated instruction, develop caseloads and tiered interventions for me. So, maybe I'm tier-two. Tier-two, I'm at a certain level of deficiency. And so, tier-two has a plan tied to it for me, as a student, that aligns with my deficiency. So, if I'm talking to you as dad, what I ought to be able to tell you would be, here are the elements around which your son is deficient, and here are the interventions that we have in the school designed to address those needs, but at the same time, ramp up the process so that your child is not going to miss the current curriculum, because we still have to expose him to the current curriculum. So, the process for the school would vary across their master schedule, because depending on my level of need, I could receive an extended block, which if it's middle school, it could mean that instead of getting, let's just say, keyboarding, that I'm going to have an extended math block to, to address my needs in addition to my regular math course. So, it is the, it is how fluid the master schedule is for children, and now, the master schedule should be driven by student needs. And so, it should be ever-changing based on those needs. And so, now, we're not perfect with that, because this is different.
I understand.
And it's, it's, it's a, it's a new way of doing business, but it's a way that we have to do business. And so, these are things that are occurring in a different way across each school, because the number of students in tier-one and tier-two across different standards would vary across various schools. Any comments for the specialists that, that are, that are kind of carrying the ball with that?
I think, I think, Sam, I think you should, I think you should kind of expand on some of the topics that we had touched on earlier about the fact that in the elementary school level, in the past, there was one set schedule. Everybody took math for a certain time, everybody took reading for a certain time, everybody had music, strings, band, and, and there was no differentiation. So, the kids at Taylor were doing the same thing at Richard Boling, and we know that the demographics and the needs for those two types of schools are different. And so, what Dr. King has done is he has instructed his cabinet to allow the principals to have a flexible schedule based on the children's needs, once they've taken those diagnostic tests. So, if they see that there are hordes of children who need more help in math, those children are just going to get less time in those extracurricular activities until they master that subject, and then they can go back into that schedule. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, you're correct. That, that's what I mean when I, when I say, you're going to have variance around master schedules in schools based on the needs of children. Now, that is not to be confused with modifying expectations.
Okay, I was hoping that, because I was hoping that we weren't moving to a monosauri, and I talked about that, where the kid learn at his or her own pace, because those kids would never catch up.
Well, that, yeah, but it's not, it doesn't change expectation. We're talking strategy to begin to accelerate the process to meet the high expectation. But when you have children starting so low, you got to have the process to begin the acceleration in order to move toward that, that expectation. So, you don't, you're not changing the expectation, but what we're doing is looking at the incremental growth toward that same expectation.
I get that.
Okay. Alright. Okay, we talked about state involvement and support, and that provided for your information. Also, in the document, we mention assessments that are necessary. Reading is a good example. This is an example of the approved adaptive reading assessment that is given. You can call it pre-post fashion, I guess, if, in terms of looking at where children are and where they are moving and how they are moving, and the types of interventions that should occur, so that's required, as well as what we call real-time decision-making based on data. And so, a requirement that we have approved data query systems in place, and for us, that would exist in the format SchoolNet, and also another piece that's referred to as dedication. This document is provided for your information. It's a part of the state's website, so you can log on to see that. The next piece speaks to focus and priority schools and school improvement plans via EndeStar. I mentioned EndeStar earlier. All of the schools are required to, to, on an ongoing basis, update, update, rather, their plans, so that if we were to log on to EndeStar to take a look at where the school is with implementation around the things we just mentioned, then we're able to do so. And, of course, the school does that as well, but those plans are there for us to see so that we can inspect what we expect, as well as the local school level is able to do that. And so, you see some of the targeted, targeted interventions and the indicators for what that means. Much of this I already alluded to, because we talked about tiered intervention, we alluded to differentiated instruction, and the monitoring process, and as well as identifying students that have those needs. And so, this is somewhat of a, a display of what all of this means, but also really specific to Norfolk and what we're continuing to do, to hone in on the needs of schools. And they are listed here. I mentioned the diagnostic pre and post. I think that's important, because it's one thing to give a diagnostic and determine what the problem, problems are, but it's another to analyze and take action based on what that tells you. And after you take action based on what that tells you, it also gives a, a post-analysis in terms of the kind of growth that took place. And so, what you see there gives you another outline of what that means and the different indicators that are important for us as we do our analysis across schools. As a matter of fact, in a few days, we will be presenting to the board around our first quarterly review from implementation of the strategic plan, and that's tied to performance indicators. And much of it is also tied to what these, what the pre-analysis did say to us, and what we have done as a result of that. So, following that, you see a sample spreadsheet that is being used, and you heard I mentioned example of tier-three interventions. And here, you see, when I, when I also mentioned caseloads, when you have caseloads of students, the students are listed, reading grades are listed, for example, and this is just, this is just a sample. Benchmark results, interdisciplinary information that needs to be listed, or any diagnostic, whether it's PALS or whether we're talking benchmark results, are there for ongoing analysis by that team that I mentioned, but also by central level, and also by the individual, the individual school team, of course, that rests within the school. And that's just a, an example of that. Next, you see further information related to accredited with warning and accredited with MISMOs, and I want to take an opportunity to, to kind of briefly show you in the same, utilizing the same process, what that involves for those schools.
Dr. King, can you explain what an AMO is for people who are watching? I don't know what that means.
Okay. Alright, AMOs relate to your annual measurable objectives, which means that the state has determined that there's a certain benchmark in reference to, tied to the percent of students that might meet or exceed standards, but the state determines what that AMO is, and you are expected to meet that particular AMO across a particular subject area that's given to us from the state. And so, some schools are accredited with MISMOs, and so, it's possible to happen, that's possible. And so, when schools are accredited with MISMOs, we're also requiring a plan to address that deficiency. So, in other words, whether you have a student, a school, rather, that's not accredited or accreditation denied or accredited with warning, or a school that is accredited with MISMO, but they're still accredited, then we're requiring a plan to address what that deficiency might be.
Dr. King, that is, for federal requirements, when they got rid of No Child Left Behind, the state applied for a waiver, but they came up with the AMOs for this, and it's interesting because you'll see the schools that are accredited with MISMOs, many of them are fully accredited by the state, but they didn't make the federal requirements. And I know for the high school level, it's the on-time graduation, and the numbers that they use are actually from the previous year for on-time graduation. So, even though for federal reasons, they use the old numbers, and so, even the new ones that have come in haven't been included. Dr. Bailey, am I correct in that?
You're correct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, they, they're a little bit behind on, on that with federal, but it's, they're subgroups, and they're, and you have to make them in the subgroups for that, for federal.
Can that still be a three-year average?
I don't think federal uses three-year averages.
We use four, five, and six-year.
Yeah.
So, I get, the point that I am attempting to make, to make here is that our expectation is that each school has a plan, they're not at the level, because last year, there were examples of schools that were accredited, but they were accredited based on the three-year average. And so, when you, you are accredited as a result of a three-year average, and then your benchmarks change, and your assessment has become more rigorous, then you end up risking falling victim to that whole process, because now, all of a sudden, you don't have the three-year average working to your advantage. So, now, we know, of course, that each school has to have its own individual plan based on where it is, in terms of what, how students are performing across those subjects and those subgroups. So, each school is required to have its plan, no matter whether it's denied or warned or what the case might be, so.
And by the way, there, there is a big disconnect between what the public understands with this. I mean, it, it, there is a lot of understanding with this. All they see is failed school or not accredited, but they really don't understand why it's there, and it's hard to explain it.
I totally agree with that. I think that's why the grading system that the state is implementing is, in some sense, unfair for that very reason, because a school might receive a grade of a C or a D without the understanding of those various reasons for lack of accreditation or the not making the AMO.
And, and that's why we talked a lot about the fact that we really need to collectively hone in on progress from the baseline forward, because while each school has to have in its plan a process to meet the absolute, in some cases, we know that you're not going to move from where you are now today to that absolute overnight. However, we should see challenging expectations around progress towards that absolute, and credit should be given to that. And in our view, that was one of the flaws in the old No Child Left Behind process, where it did not give ample credit for that. We'd rather not have to be subjected to that, but we are until we get us, until we move to a certain point and a certain level of growth, then the point becomes moot at that time, so. With that said, that gives you a snapshot of procedures that are being implemented. Of course, that's a work in progress every day. I applaud administrative team for what they are doing. Also, building-level principals for what they're doing in terms of their support and their development, in terms of modeling for teachers and, and beginning to develop teachers to become even more, even more effective in terms of doing their work. But that also has implications for budget, has implications for time, in terms of children being behind, in terms of enrichment for children that are already high flyers and performing at high levels, we need to continue to challenge those students too. And it speaks to the students that are not meeting the elements of the standard across the expected period of time. If they're not, then we need to provide the additional time that's necessary to begin to plug those gaps. And so, those are the kinds of things that will drive our recommendations to the board around budget. Those are the items that have surfaced within our strategic plan, and these are the items that are, that are driving our budgetary procedures as we speak. So, with that said, I would ask Dr. Thornton to begin to offer, to walk us through our forecast in terms of where we are now, and how that links to our work.
Thank you, Dr. King. Excuse me. Mayor Frame, Dr. Houston, school board members, and council members, and Mrs. Jones, good afternoon. As Dr. King mentioned, these next few slides will provide a very brief look at our 2015 budget from a standpoint of some preliminary assumptions, as well as the budgetary outlook and the process that we will follow to ensure that we develop a budget that is aligned with the school division's strategic plan. Just a very quick recap of our current budget. This is general fund only. The total budget for the current year, total estimated revenues is just under $312 million. Of course, you know that nearly 95% of the total operating revenues are received through the state, as well as through the appropriation by the city council. If you also notice on this slide, we have the five major revenue categories. I bring to your attention the fourth category there being the carry-forward funds. We made a conscious decision this past spring, that is, the school board, to utilize just under $8 million, $7.7 million in one-time carry-forward funds to close the budget gap that we were faced with, even after making some very difficult expenditure reductions. We still saw a shortfall in revenue of just under $8 million. Yes, sir.
Dr. Thornton, will there be another budget that you approved? Is there a final budget after? I know you approved our budget at the end of, when we, we did one in May, and then you approved the budget, but after, you said estimated revenues, for instance, federal funds, did that $4.5 million?
Yes. Yes.
You will eventually pass another budget that is actually in the, or will you come up with another budget that you finalize, or are you just working off this?
We're just working off this. I think last year, after the audit was completed, the school board came back to the city council and asked that it appropriate an additional $3 million, I believe it was.
That was, that was the money that was just so passed through.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, like the federal funds, you think that's a good number? I mean, who knows?
That's a good number in terms of these other non-grant funds. These, the grant funds for your Title I, your special ed reside in the grant fund, which is separate from the general fund. The primary source of the federal funds here would be our federal impact aid.
Right.
For our military or defense-connected students.
Okay.
So to answer your question, yes, this would basically be our estimate short of some major change that we're not anticipating. So we do not expect to come back to the council for an additional.
That wasn't, I wouldn't really ask.
In terms of having a.
I just want to know if that was the good number.
Based on what we know today? Yes, sir.
But wait, there's more.
But if you want to give us some more. Again, estimated expenditures for the current year, total just under $312 million, with nearly 85% invested in our highly qualified personnel to provide those instructional services and support. And then the balance of the operating budget, about 16%, just under $50 million, is in non-personnel costs. In terms of that non-personnel cost, just to give a perspective of what we're dealing with as it relates to some of those discretionary non-personnel costs, of that total $50 million, nearly 66% or two-thirds of the non-personnel costs are really based on contractual obligations, including utilities, insurances, other requirements to meet state, state funding, as well as debt service, those things that really we don't have a major control over if we want to maintain the current service level, and those things that have either maintenance or other contractual obligation. So.
I was going to say, could there be, I mean, I see textbooks, so we ordered textbooks there, and I talked about textbooks a time ago, so what, what percentage does that make up within that $50 million? Because I know that there are some schools that don't have textbooks for certain subjects.
Textbooks make up about $3 million of that, less than 10%.
Could, sorry.
It's $3 million.
Okay. And then we look at software licenses, and there's some, some scale of working with city and schools, looking at some of the software that we have, and, you know, in terms of maintenance, isn't there some, some scale that we can look at that and begin to consolidate that or use the same maintenance agreement as it relates to that?
These software licenses are basically two types of license, two categories. One would be instructional, the other would be administrative. The instructional obviously is unique to Norfolk Public Schools, some of the reading software licenses, some of the writing, and some of those other.
Some of the copy machines and stuff like that.
But in terms of administrative, then we would get into our ERP or our human resource finance payroll systems. Some communities do have a shared service in that area, but here presently, we do not necessarily share the same software. I think the city is on MUNIS. Is the city on MUNIS?
No.
So we do not share the same administrative software.
About in terms of a copy of machines, you know, maintenance agreements and things like that?
No.
Wouldn't that be in that number?
No.
And that's all separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on non-personnel-related costs? And, and I would also ask us to be reminded that over the last four years, this has been an area where we've made reductions, where we could. So in terms of having to make additional reductions, then the challenge just becomes greater, because as I shared with you earlier, when that $7.7 million one-time revenue goes away, and then we begin the process for '15 with a $7.7 million gap before we do any adjustments or address any of these contractual obligations. In terms of an outlook, the preliminary outlook for revenue assumptions for '15, I would remind everyone that 2015 would represent the first year of a new biennium. So we are eagerly awaiting to see what the governor's proposed budget for the next biennium will be. We will not expect to see that until the third week of December. It also represents, the next biennium represents the re-benchmarking process, where the standards of quality or that major funding category for state funds is recalculated each year based on some updated actual information. So in a normal year, which we haven't seen in, in several years, re-benchmarking could provide additional funding for schools or localities for schools, somewhere in the range of 3% to 5% of normal year. However, we have not had a normal year in, in several years, so it remains to be seen what we will see in terms of re-benchmarking coming through for Norfolk Public Schools and school divisions across Commonwealth. And of course, to be determined, local, federal, and other. And again, to remind us once again, we will begin the process in terms of revenue of eliminating the one-time revenue source that was used to balance the current year. In terms of expenditure assumptions, we provided this information to our school board last week, just to give the board a context around which some of our major cost drivers, what those costs would be based on a 1% for every 1%. So that is what this slide provides for you, primarily a 1% salary increase based on our current salary base, is $2.6 million, and you can read the rest of what a 1% would be for BRS and health insurance. Again, this is to be determined. We don't know for sure what those costs will be for next year and what those initiatives will be. But we know that one of our strategic plan goals and action plans is to retract and retain and develop highly qualified staff. And we would expect that with this next year being a re-benchmarking year, where we would expect to see some increase across Commonwealth and state funding, other school divisions are probably going to try to be more aggressive in their compensation. So in order for us to remain competitive, we believe we're going to have to be in position to address that as well. In terms of preliminary funding initiatives or priorities, just for planning purposes, if we were to, again, this is very early in the process, but if we were to provide a 2% for all staff, then that estimated cost would be $5.2 million, and that's subject to recalculation, in most cases downward, based on what our actual rebasing process of current salary cost will be for next year. So it's preliminary. I would say at this point, this would be the worst case in terms of the total cost, but again, once we get into what our actual salaries are for this year, we'll make those adjustments next year. We don't just arbitrarily add 2% to the base budget if that's not what's needed to actually fund anticipated costs for next year for salaries. Yes, sir.
Does that include bus drivers as well?
Yes, sir. All staff and the benefits associated with those as well.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes, sir.
Has the district discussed, as an initiative or priority, funding the hard-to-staff areas, trying to give some additional funds for the hard-to-recruit math? Because it's nice to give everybody 2% raise, but if you're not recruiting teachers, what's the incentive for them to come, particularly in math, special ed, you know, areas that we know we can't find people?
I know that our strategic plan is one of the, several of the action steps intended to address those. Dr. Birdsong is here, and Dr. King may want to address it in more detail, but the strategic plan recognizes the need to recruit and retain highly qualified in those hard-to-fuel areas.
Yeah. Dr. Thornton is actually right. It's in many areas of our strategic plan to include, for example, the math specialists, the reading specialists, mathematics positions across the board, technology positions, media specialists. So yes, all of that is including, included in our strategic plan.
And we are going to talk about stipends.
Okay, because where I'm going is that there's an area where city council, when we discuss budgets, where we could probably make a significant impact, would be trying to find funds to assist with the hiring of highly qualified staff in those critical need areas. It just, it is really hard.
And it's, and it's.
Is, right. It's part of the retention, there needs to be that incentive in there as well, but they just can't find people to teach math. I mean, it's just, there's nobody there here in the area. And if they are, they're getting sucked to Chesapeake in Virginia Beach now, because that's where, in Portsmouth even, because Portsmouth is exceeding our salary scale, and, and that's actually pretty sad. I mean.
Didn't we set aside for math specialists and English specialists? About 60, was it? How many?
Eighty.
Eighty, 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 under sixty.
About five.
Okay, have we filled all of those positions?
Want to give a report on?
We have, yes, we have 39 of our reading specialist field. We actually have 38 of the math, actually 39 math, 38 reading. Out of 40. Out of 40. And a couple of those positions have to be backfield, but that's how many we've identified at this point, so we feel pretty good about that.
I'm going to go out on a limb with this, because I know the budget with the schools are really tight, but when we had our retreat in Smithfield, we talked about the number of city employees who were full-time employees who made less than the $22,000 something dollar poverty, poverty wage. Can you guys take a look at that? We have, as a city, for city employees, determined that we didn't want anyone, we identified about 108 employees that were full-time employees who were working and were making less than that $22,000 and something number. And so since a lot of times we get the comparison, we can't do it for our city employees if we don't do it for our school board, for our school employees and vice versa, then I would say that we can't make our city, we, we can't make that adjustment for our city employees, which we are going to do as a city, without taking a look at the school employees as well, to see where there may need to be some increases for employees that are making below that $22,000, whatever it is, living, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I made that note.
Thank you.
And another area of focus at this point is the need to identify resources to eliminate the current waiting list for preschool education service, families that require those. We currently have approximately, with the need for about 26 additional classrooms to provide services.
So 18 kids per class.
18 kids per class with a fully qualified teacher and aide, and then all of the other support, instructional support for that instruction. And that, right now, the estimated cost would be $4.2 million.
Is it purely personnel?
It's primarily personnel, yeah. About 90% of it's personal.
Is the space available for those?
Sorry, ma'am?
Is the space available? Is there space available?
Well, we've had the preliminary conversation about space. The young Richter will help us, help inform us on what space is actually available across the city.
Is that from three to five? Is that what you're?
Yes, sir. Three-year-old, four-year-olds.
13 three-year-old classes and 13 four-year-old classes. That's what we currently have on the waiting list.
I'm assuming that it's possible with their data that they come back, that you could close an elementary school and turn that into a fully childhood center, which would take a huge chunk of that if you could get the funding for it. So it's not necessarily that in individual schools, it could be at a single location like they have in Berkeley or Campesello.
So the 26 classrooms, I'm sorry, what did you, what did you say?
46 classrooms.
And how many of those were our three-year-olds?
13.
13, and then so 13 four-year-olds. 13.
And is that waiting list based on parents' desire, or is that based on need?
Those are actually families who have submitted applications and qualify.
Qualify economically?
Yes, ma'am, according to the state criteria.
And those are only ones that have been registered? It's not ones that we're aware of, families that we're aware of, that their children's are at need and they're not getting these services?
That is correct. Those are the numbers of families who have applications, and we do not have the space for them right now.
And so that would be like 468 children, is that what you're saying?
Approximately.
I mean, approximately, that's 18 children.
Do you have any idea how many kids need to be served that aren't applying?
A little more.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a figure, figure to date, but what I can say is that if we're able to do this, that's a step in the right direction. There's a huge population that still remains in terms of needing such service. And I know your question centers on, do we have any idea how to quantify that?
That's what the study is going to be looking at, birth rates.
Right, yeah.
With bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and that type of employee, how do you get them up to, above the poverty level based on the number of hours that they work?
You increase their hourly rate, which translates into an investment, additional resources. So you have to increase their hourly rate, adjust the salary scale, which would increase their hourly rate, basically. That's the simplest way.
And so, so the school district is amenable to that?
I would, without, well, I'll let.
Is this not, some of it we hadn't discussed?
I think the school division is amenable to doing whatever it takes to attract and retain highly qualified staff, whether it be bus drivers, classroom teachers.
We were, we were talking about permanent employees. We found hundreds of, permanent, full-time employees who we were not paying living wage to. We thought we should do that.
So your cafeteria workers, are they, are they full-time?
The managers are, and some of them are. It's a mix, because we don't necessarily need full-time in cafeteria for every position, but the managers are full-time and other positions are, but that's a separate fund itself. That's not a general fund. That will be funded through the cafeteria fund, through receipts.
And bus drivers, is that a separate fund?
No, that's in the general fund.
Now, bus drivers are not full-time, though, right?
No, either are.
They're part-time.
Across the board, sorry. Let me, and you mentioned a full, a teacher and an assistant for 18 of these kids, for a classroom of 18 students. And I just asked the question for, for information, okay? Because I, I believe in this early childhood initiative. Is there any other city in Virginia anywhere close to, to doing anything like that?
Not.
Not, not anywhere.
What?
Not with universal pre-K.
Not, not in Virginia. I mean, I mean.
You mean universal, pre-K?
Well, this is what, that sounds to me like.
Everyone who's eligible, this whole division provides the service, that everyone who's eligible.
The waiting list, I guess, yeah.
Well, we're the envy of, of other districts in the area.
I asked that just for information. I think that's a bold move.
And I was in the Richmond region, and I know there, there are no school communities in the Richmond region of, of any significant size that has, that has been able to fully fund their waiting list, particularly those schools where there's a high concentrated number of families that would qualify.
And, and you guys have that waiting list because last year, you did an excellent job reaching out to the community and doing those pre-K roundups, and it was tremendous to see how many people came out when they found out about the pre-K in kindergarten. And there are people from other cities trying to get their kids in because we have that. And so because of that, you now have a waiting list, where before, you didn't even know how many people were out there, but now you've advertised it, and so there, we know there's a need, there's a critical need.
Is, is 18 the number that we now work with as far as in our own classes right now?
Yes.
With a teacher and an aide, that's, thank you, Dr. King.
That's a stat.
Mayor, just as, as a little note, governors, back to Gerald Bellisle, several Virginia governors, and nationally, people have been desiring to move in this direction. Educational research tells us we need to go in that direction. Any model would really present, provide the whole country. I wouldn't, I would, okay. I believe this, I, I do, but there's members of the General Assembly who do not, by the way. I mean, there's a whole group of them, the Richmond Time Dispatches, they're editorialized against it, so. The value of early childhood education.
Do we add locally, following preschool programs and the success of children? Do you know? Because at one time, we did not demonstrate that, and I was just curious. I mean, we all feel that way.
What was the question?
Whether we had local research that demonstrated the advantages of children that had been provided with preschool.
I can't say that we have local research that indicates that, but there is certainly research that indicates that.
Zero to five.
Because I think at one time, Norfolk did not.
Right, that's why, that's why I think research is limited. Yeah, but, but.
But I would hope now that we would see that.
Are we able to check children like that?
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Those that we serve, we can.
Okay.
The next several slides just provide a, a overview of the budget process itself. Very quickly, the process is going to be driven by the strategic plan, which is, has been designed to eventuate in a school division that's the cornerstone of a properly diverse community. And that alignment process will include, beginning with the strategic plan, right on down, influencing the school board priorities, school board budget goal. on down, influencing the school board priorities, school board budget goal, and then to result in operational efficiency and long-range planning. And these next slides provide the various components of the process, including the alignment, as I just mentioned, and some of the key other influences. We will be holding a pre-budget public hearing on November 6th, receive community input on the budget process for next year for FY15. And then we'll also, Dr. King will, has convened a budget advisory committee, and then we'll go through the process itself, data gathering, and then of course, the budget building and balancing process to include a recalculation of our base revenue budget, to include the elimination of one-time revenue sources, and then we'll recalculate the basic expenditure budget to eliminate, identify and eliminate one-time non-recurring prior-year expenditures, and we'll rebase, if you will, the existing personnel costs, including benefits. And we'll determine what the funding requests initiatives are required to align the strategic plan, and then we'll calculate the estimated budget gap. I guess I'm being presumptuous that we'll have a deficit, but we know that we're starting with a $7.7 million revenue deficit before we even add any adjustments to the expenditure base. And then we will identify budget balancing strategies to culminate in a budget presentation by the superintendent, and then of course, the process for public input and deliberation by the board, and then transmit over to the city manager for inclusion in his budget.
That's my last question. I look at this, 311 million.
Yes, sir.
Have we talked about this some time ago? Does that meet all of our needs and challenges as we move forward? For example, I'll take kids with special needs, kids with disabilities. Do we have the adequate number as relates to funds to take care of our kids with special needs?
As far as requirements for students with special needs, yes. Funding is really aligned to caseloads, so...
Individuals who need, again, get on a bus with a wheelchair, you know, individuals to care, caregivers or what have you. And the next piece is, you know, we talked a lot about, one of the issues that we have in some of our fragile neighborhoods is that we have kids taking, battling on various medications, and most of these kids have an IEP. And how do you, we talked about identifying individuals and moving them through your matrix, but when a kid has an IEP, that adds another layer, which adds more work for that teacher. How are we dealing with that? Because I, you know, when I taught, it was in Richmond, we had a lot of abundance of kids with IEPs. So how are you, again, with what you're doing, be able to ease the burden on the teacher, to allow that teacher to be able to teach, because they started moving inclusion, started moving these kids into main classrooms, whether it be algebra, math, science, whatever. So how are we addressing that issue, making sure that these individuals don't fall further behind outside of what we've already put in place? Is there additional money from the state to deal with that?
The money is allotted from the state based on the caseload, so yes, the money that reflects the need of that particular student.
Okay.
There's a, there's a dollar amount for that. But I would also say, as you already alluded to, that each one of the special needs students will have an IEP in place. That individualized education plan should address the deficiencies of that particular student. With that should come certain strategies that are supposed to be implemented to address those deficiencies. Those strategies are supposed to be facilitated and led by a specialist, whether it be a learning disability, whether it be behavior disorder, et cetera. And in many cases, we are making a shift to what some call collaborative, what some, you know, some call joint inclusion, that kind of thing, where you have a certified classroom teacher in addition to the special needs teacher that has the endorsement to address those needs. They should be working collaboratively as a team to deliver the needs for X number of students, and that X number is driven by a caseload formula. For example, it could be five students, it could be seven, whatever the requirement might be. But the research is pretty clear around the fact that the collaborative model is the most effective, but it's only the most effective when it's implemented appropriately for children that fit that model.
You were incorporating that in your rigor with those individualized, well, those IEPs?
IEPs, yes. I, I would like to think, well, now, at this particular year, our model for planning and addressing the needs, that we're, we're getting better with that, because if you look at the previous data behind performance of special needs students, it tells us that there are needs that are not being met. And the reason that those needs were not being met, based on the review, is because there was examples of the IEP not being followed, so accountability around the IEP, and then examples of the IEP not being updated as it is needed. And so all of those things are things that are expected to appear and surface, not only in the strategic plan, but also in the special needs plan for our students across all of those areas of exceptionality. So now we have a process for it, it's a matter of monitoring that and being accountable for all of the pieces that are there.
All right. We're going to have to move along quickly with the legislative priorities. I don't know who's going to do that, but you're going to have to be...
Yeah, we had planned to go through those again.
Two questions, the student population. I mean, what, who, do you know now what your population is?
Total numbers, tell them this point. I don't have that figure with me, Dr. Thornton. Sorry. The question was around, do we know what our current total number is today for students? Student enrollment?
Fall membership, we just reported 30,172. We had projected 30,150, that's K-12, that's not including pre-K.
Right, okay, good. So you actually...
We're slightly above what we had projected, and then the ADM that will follow will be very similar to what we projected.
The 4.2 million for the, for the waiting list for the pre-K, would you expect any federal or state funds to assist in that? Is that going to be all local funds?
That would have to be all local funding. The pre-K 3 classes, we already locally funded, we used our $101 for that, and even though we applied for more through the VPI this year, the Virginia Preschool Initiative, we did not receive any additional funds, so we have utilized all of our funding that we have, so the addition of those classes would have to be locally funded.
Okay, anything else?
One quick question. If we're identifying these people that are falling behind early, we've got a great way to do that, and then you say you take them and extend spells instead of, or they go into intensive study, try to help them, to teachers, is that part of their, who's going to, who's going to do that? Is this somebody that would normally have, I mean, I'm talking about incentivizing and retaining teachers, are we going to put so much on them that they have no, and I don't know what their schedules are every day, but I assume they have some free time, and who's going to, who's going to take care of bringing them? Do you understand what I'm asking? And are we going to build into a budget to incentivize these teachers to do it, or is it expected, or?
Today, we do not have incentives in terms of stipends to do so, because what I described is an expectation that what we refer to as a safety net, that they occur during the school day. If you use middle school as an example, middle schools have what they call connection blocks, where students really go out for electives and that kind of thing. So what we're saying is, there are some students that will receive a reduced amount of seat time in a elect, in an elective class compared to some other students because of the block.
Right, it's not the students I'm going to be asking about, it's the teachers. Are they going to be tasked to provide more than they are now as far as time, even though it's during the school day, or are they going to, or is it already expected that they're there? Most of them, whenever they need to help, they help.
It doesn't increase the hours at this point? That's, it changes the...
It increases the day, but it's increased the hour? I don't know, I don't know what the schedule is.
Yeah, well, the master schedules are going to, are varying across the school. Any of the executive directors want to comment on what we see in some of the schools now? In reference to that, in terms of how, what we are doing now has changed what some teachers would do in schools to provide these services?
Well, I can comment on that just here. Presentations that we had this summer, first of all, we happened to go in and work with our schools on the process of school improvement, because you saw the presentation, and you see we have a lot more schools and school improvement than we have today, so these schools not to have to go through the tiering process, that is, to use their data to define the groups of students who need safety nets in the day. This summer, we worked with the principals, even elementary principals, to develop master schedules. Every school developed one, and some of them did some very innovative things. They have teachers coming in at different times. One school has their staff, teachers coming in later, so that they can provide safety nets not only during the day, but then immediately after school, and they've changed the bus time. All of our schools are providing safety nets throughout the day, and we have those master schedules on, gel drives, and we've given that to other number of cabinets so they can see. On the different instructions to those students who need additional time in reading and math in order to meet the SOAs.
Is that it?
Yes, I have one question, and it might not even be a relevant question. Dr. King, is there any chance that the state, whether the State Board of Education, Attorney and Attorney's Office, might tell us that we can't implement the Ten Shot School? I mean, do you have the complete clearance, or is there still some oversight somewhere?
There's still oversight. So we're having discussion around the modification of calendars, that kind of thing, and also discussions around the lottery expectation in terms of what a modified lottery, which is what we're recommending, instead of a total lottery for a traditional...
But in regards to just being able to do it, do we have that clearance yet?
No.
Okay, thank you.
When are we going to build a...
Well, I think the IEP, I'm not... I know what I'm, I used to do that. I mean, the, their responses are due to the PPEA, when?
November 26.
November 26.
Yes.
Well, thank you. Dr. King, I enjoyed your state of the school speech. Sorry it wasn't more widely reported, but I thought you did a great job. One thing that, that I'm getting talked to about, maybe I'm sure other members of council, is the STEM school initiative, this comprehensive vocational school initiative. And now, you know, we hear about the early childhood, which a lot of people are talking about. We're having these public hearings with our poverty commissions reduction, we hear a lot of that now. At some point, maybe if the school board could gather itself, or maybe you could just tell us, if you could tell us what you think the most important initiatives are, and I know they're all important, but I mean, but, you know, they're, I mean, just tell us, give us some advice about what you think, you know, how we should react to all this discussion? Okay, that would be helpful. Okay. All right, ready? Okay, all right, well, that's plenty, thanks. We're going to have to hustle to get something eaten, so thanks for being here. Good to be with you. Okay.